Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We will, uh, we will ask, uh, that a moment of prayer be taken and Commissioner Jay Drake.
It was Marty, yes.
I'm sorry.
Marty will handle that.
I'll help out tonight. If we could bow our heads. Almighty Creator, let us trust in you. Give us wisdom for the benefit of the land you entrust us to be stewards of and of your children of our county. We thank you and we bless you. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. This evening, we, uh, we have Mr. Dale Brewer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brewer is a commander of the DAV Auxiliary Unit 125. Mr. Brewer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brewer? Where do you go? Come up here, please. Yeah, except this is our notice of our appreciation for your Pledge of Allegiance. So thanks. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Dale.
Yeah, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. All those in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
I move to approve the agenda for this evening as presented.
Support Nakagiri.
Been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. You'll notice that there on both sides of the page, Chair will entertain a motion to, uh, accept and put on file the correspondence on today's agenda.
So move Gross.
Second sample.
Been moved and supported. I, uh, I might add also that when we receive these items of correspondence from other counties, uh, it would, uh, it is not inappropriate for us to either respond in some form of acceptance or for us to add comments or, uh, correspondence of our own depending on the subject matter that we find in this list and, and the others that we may feel are appropriate. Next item on the agenda is called to the public. All those in favor of, uh, accepting the correspondence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the call to the public.
Our first one is Randy Clausen Howell.
Good evening, I should say. It's good to see you. I enjoy coming here because I know that here are nine people that are, are, have the same focus that I have to make Livingston County a better place for everybody. So it's encouraging for me to come here and you know my story. I, I want the best for the people who are less fortunate than us who cannot make ends meet. And one of the big ways that are doing that, that you know we're a part of is, um, improving the LUTS transportation by, by providing what is needed there. But it goes way beyond that because now I'm on a new, another path somewhat related to that because even if we have a bus system, we're going to have to have some structure and we're going to have to, to do some planning around where will they wait for the bus and will there be sidewalks and all those things that go with that. So, so while the, um, the LUTS and, and the, and the money that's going to come from you towards a better bus system, I know you're going to have all these other things on your mind too. And I appreciate the fact that you're going to take a good look at that. But buses are important. I think some of you new ones don't realize how, uh, how much they were important to me as my mother and dad aged and, and I had a father in a wheelchair and a mother who didn't, couldn't be in a car because she didn't know how to say scoot back, you know, she couldn't get it. So I had, had to have a bus for her. And there's a lot of people getting older who need, are going to need a better bus system. So I appreciate your attention to that and your ongoing attention to making Livingston County the best county in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have no further cards.
Is there anyone on the screen that wants to, uh, address the board?
No, Commissioner, I do not see any.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting of March thirteenth nineteen, uh, twenty, twenty-three.
I, I move to approve the meeting as stated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support Helsnerman.
Been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? The next item on the agenda are tabled items from previous meetings and there are none. We'll move to item ten, which is reports. Do any of the commissioners have reports for this evening? Commissioner Jay.
Um, I'd just like to, uh, let, uh, my colleagues know that last week I attended a meeting of a group of folks who, um, are partner agencies for the Homeless Continuum of Care. And, uh, it's a group of people who are, uh, somewhat involved and definitely very concerned about homelessness in Livingston County. My colleagues recall about a month ago, we had a couple who, who came and appeared, uh, before us during call to the public and, uh, expressed concern about homelessness in the county. I, I do not see myself as being the lead person on this thing, but, uh, I've been assured by Amy Johnston and some of the others that they will, uh, share information with me. Um, and, uh, it, it seems like somebody needs to start beating the drum to see if we can't come up with a solution for homelessness. And I don't know that I'm the drum beater, but I, I will be involved to a certain extent and I will keep all my colleagues up to date, uh, on what I find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other commissioners that have a report this evening? Yes, sir. Commissioner Drake.
Thank you, Commissioner. The, uh, report I have has to do with a risk that's looming that will affect everybody in the room, everybody in the county, everybody in the state, everybody in the nation. And it is, it flows from a executive order from March where our president directed both the Federal Treasury and the Federal Reserve with all speed to develop something called central bank digital currency. And the upshot of this is that nobody will have any cash ever again. And the cash or the ability to spend money, the ability to deposit money in your checking or savings, the ability to transfer it will all be digital. And the word that they're using is programmable digital. And programmable means somebody else, not you, has to analyze and look at every one of your transactions. And it is, uh, said by the supporters, an almost perfect record of every single transaction that happens in the economy. In the economy. Every penny you earn, save or spend is tracked, read, analyzed. And then there was the endpoint of the program, programmability is that somebody either punishes you or rewards you for what you've done. Uh, there are a lot of individually bad things that I've listed here. But you'd think with a lot of these bad things like, uh, if you don't take the vaccine, you get punished. If you do join a certain political party, you get rewarded. That, that's the lot of stuff that can rally you up. But the, but the real key is that with a flick of the switch, they can affect negative interest rates. Banks have complained for many years that they can only go to zero. They want to go to a s- place where they can take negative interest out of your account whether you like it or not to help the Federal Reserve get over rough spots. So there are a lot of bad things, but the worst one is negative interest that can be forced upon you. The Fed earlier this, late last week, put out a sign up sheet for their initial step. I don't think it's called Fed Bucks. I think it might be called Fed Coin. But it's a interim program to get banks starting to use it. And then after that, they'll transition if they, uh, if they can get the Congress to go along. Luckily, there are people in the United States House of Representatives that oppose this and there's some senators that oppose it. But, um, the president wants it and the Treasury wants it. And, uh, I think it's bad for the county. I think it's bad for the people in our county. So that's the, the report. We'll know in May, June how many banks or organizations sign up for the initial first step that the feds proposed. So I'll be back then when that count comes to see if, uh, to see if, uh, it's a downhill slope or an uphill battle. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is anyone here to comment or question at all? Are there any other reports from the commissioners? Not then we will move on to consideration to, uh, resolutions for consideration. I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Jay Drake.
Item number eleven on our meeting agenda tonight. Eleven A, Resolution for Consideration Numbered two oh, two three dash three oh, dash three oh, five, excuse me, zero, three, five. It's going to require a, an eventual roll call vote. It's for a resolution to submit the estimated twenty twenty-four general fund budget to the tax allocation board. It's brought to us by Fiscal Services. Can I have a motion?
So move Helsnerman. Support Deaton.
Moved by Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Deaton. Everyone listened to Hillary's presentation at FAM a couple of days ago. If anybody would like to, uh, have more information from either Hillary or Cindy, they're here. Am I seeing a desire for more comment questions? Commissioner Nakagiri.
I just, you know, the resolution references, um, the, uh, submission of the attached estimate. Um, was that? I, unless I missed it, is that in the packet?
It should be in the agenda. Yes, it was submitted in the script of this resolution.
Okay, I'll find. Okay, all right, thank you.
You good?
Yep.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We're moving on to item eleven B. It's numbered two oh, two three dash oh, three, dash oh, three, six. It's a resolution authorizing the part-time conciliator position to be pooled between two employees operating within the twenty twenty-three budget limits at our front of the court. Ms. Shar is here. This was also, uh, talked about.
Move the resolution, Nakagiri. Support Smith.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to have a further presentation or question or comment or grilling? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen. Um, all those, uh, voice vote kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? The chair recognizes a nine to zero vote. It passes. Item number two oh, two three dash oh, three, dash oh, three, seven. A resolution authorizing applying for and accepting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four grant with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, which is part of the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to provide funding to comply with the Michigan Indigent, Indigent Defense Act brought to us by public, the Public Defender's Office. Karen here is here. If anyone would like, uh,
Move the resolution, Nakagiri.
Thank you. Anywhere, anybody would like to question Karen further? Commissioner Fiani.
I'd like to make a amendment to the resolution if I may.
It's open.
I move to amend resolution two zero, two, three, oh, three, oh, three, seven, to add, be it further resolved that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners authorizes nine hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents of general fund dollars for the county's required local contribution. And be it further resolved that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners authorizes the treasurer to transfer five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the local contribution in October twenty twenty-three and three hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars of the local contribution in January twenty twenty-four from general fund to the Indigent Defense Fund.
Support.
It's been moved as an amendment with support. We're open to comment, analysis, or, um, question.
Thank you. I was just curious on the, um, what was the rationale behind splitting it up, you know, in the manner it was five hundred and fifty thousand in October and then the remainder in, um, in the, in January.
Hi, so Commissioner Fiani did ask me if this is normal, which typically isn't. We typically do twenty-five percent and then seventy-five percent because of the way the fiscal year is. However, with the, um, MIDC grant, we're required to use our local funding first. So really we're trying to cover that, that first quarter, state quarters, um, expenditures for the year. And then the balance would be, um, in January of twenty twenty-four. So about five hundred and fifty thousand is about one quarter's worth of expenditures. And then the grant will kick in from there.
Thank you. Any further question or comment? Seeing none. Amy, do you have the correct wording?
I do.
You're, you're satisfied? You ready?
I am.
Thank you. All those in favor? This would be a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Anybody against? Chair recognizes a nine to zero unanimous vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item eleven.
That was on the amendment.
The amended resolution.
Yeah, we haven't accepted the manhood.
We just accepted the amendment.
My mind's somewhere else. I got it. I got to pull back into this room. Gentlemen, is there any further discussion on the original resolution now that it's been amended? Discussion, comment, objection? Seeing none. Voice vote on the, uh, amended motion, please. All those say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Nine to zero. We're back to the agenda. Eleven D, we're at two oh, two three dash oh, three, oh, three, eight. It's a resolution authorizing improvements to Andy, number seven and thirteen, county drain and distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. It's brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. May I have a motion?
Move it. Support Gross.
It's been moved and supported. This was discussed at FAM also. Does anyone wish a further question, answer, comment before we move into the decision? Seeing, seeing no hands. All those that, uh, are going to listen to our secretary, take a roll call vote now. Please listen.
Commissioner Domas.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Nine to zero unanimous. We're on to eleven. Subletter E. It's number two oh, two three dash oh, three, dash oh, three, nine. It's a resolution authorizing improvements to Osceola, number one, branch two of the county drain and distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. It's brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. It was discussed at FAM. But first, I'd like a motion to adopt.
So move Gross. Support Helsnerman.
Any questions? Amendments? Objections?
And supported by whom, please?
Helsnerman.
Helsnerman.
Okay, thank you.
Into discussion? Question? We all had a chance to, uh, beat up Mr. Recker the other day. Any, any further beatings required? None. Seeing none, it's a roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Nine to zero unanimous. We're at eleven F. Numbered two oh, two three dash oh, three, dash zero, four, zero. It's a resolution of appreciation to Livingston County nine-one-one Central Dispatchers during National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April nine to fifteen in twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Second sample.
Is that young lady here to see you?
Keisha's.
Would you like to come up, please? And I have to apologize. I left that awarded my desk. So if you'll excuse me for twelve seconds, I'll be right back. But have a seat, please.
We wanted at least one of the directors to get out of the chair and sit here. We're waiting for you to sing the national anthem, then we'll, then we'll proceed. I think you do a fine job.
So we have nothing to give Keisha tonight. Um, what we had, what, what we had planned for this was to, we have a proclamation that's ready. We were going to present it at nine-one-one, uh, with Keisha and the dispatcher's president who may be working. Um, we'll pick a different time that we can invite you all to it. So that one was intended for a couple of weeks from now. Just wanted to clarify that. Surprise.
So tell the dispatchers we voted it down.
You still have to resolve.
Correct.
Yes.
I think that closes out comment, discussion. And we'll move directly into a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero. The chair recognizes it passes unanimously. We're at ten, eleven, sub G. Number two oh, two three dash oh, three, dash oh, four, one. It's a resolution authorizing maintenance to the fire and EMS VHF paging system brought to us by Central Dispatch. Again, this was in this need of a motion to start.
Move Helsnerman. Second sample.
Moved by Helsnerman, seconded by Sample. We had discussion and analysis at FAM. If anybody would like to continue, Keisha's still here. She's waving her hand wanting to, but nobody else is. Very good. We'll close the discussion portion. We'll move into a vote. All those voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair recognizes a unanimous passage, nine to zero. We're on to eleven H. Which is numbered two oh, two three dash oh, three, dash oh, four, four, two. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a nine-one-one telephone system and maintenance contract for nine-eleven Central Dispatch utilizing ARPA, A R P A, funding brought to us by Central Dispatch. May I have a motion?
So move Gross.
Moved by Gross, support by Deaton. Any further analysis, questions, or comment? Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Smith. Had his hand up first.
Just for clarification, it says to be paid under the first, therefore to be paid utilizing ARPA funds if eligible. I, I think we've ascertained that it is eligible. But I, if memory serves, we only had an unallocated amount of four hundred thousand. Is that still the case?
So.
Administrator?
Uh, we've actually discussed this extensively and, uh, not only is there the four hundred thousand, but there's a, we're also exploring looking at the one point five million that was already allocated for nine-one-one. Um, there are some other items that, that was, uh, explored for that one point five million, but it seems that those items are going to be grossly more expensive than the one point five million. So we're reevaluating how we're going to approach that. So there certainly is plenty of funding right now to be, um, utilized for this particular item through ARPA.
Does that help?
So, so if I can just rephrase in, in my simple mind, we are going to, to, uh, pull money from the initial allocation of the one point eight, not the remaining four hundred thousand.
Uh, well, it's actually one, one point five, but yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure Gross.
Um, I just would like to reiterate the point I made, uh, last week that, echoing Commissioner Smith's concern about having only four hundred thousand of unallocated ARPA funding. However, I'm aware that we have a significant amount of ARPA funding that's been labeled as contingency. And I, I guess I would like to ask our financial staff at, at next FAM or next board, if they could give us an update on how much has been spent and or committed out of contingency. If they could give us an update on how much has been spent and or committed out of contingency. So we keep, so we don't find ourselves behind the ball at some point.
Thank you. Good point. Anyone else?
Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We're on to eleven. Subparagraph I. It is number two oh two three dash oh three dash zero four three. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the bids for overhead door replacement. Brought to us by Emergency Medical Services Department. May I have a motion?
Move it. Support Smith.
Moved by Domas, support by Smith.
I'm ready to vote.
So am I.
Does anyone need any further analysis, question, answer? Seeing none, all those in favor, voice vote, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, it's unanimous, it's passed. We're to two oh two three dash oh three dash zero four four. So resolution authorizing the replacement of the two prior overhead doors we just voted on at Emergency Medical Services. May I have a motion?
So move gross. Second sample.
Moved by Gross, second by Sample. We're into discussion or questions? I see no hands waving. All those in favor, voice vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero unanimous, it passes. We're to K. On the agenda, two oh two three dash oh three zero four five. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of two hundred North Grand. City of Folleville, State of Michigan, and the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA. Funding brought to us by Emergency Medical Services. May I have a motion?
So move Helsnerman, support Deaton.
Moved by Helsnerman, supported by Deaton. Any questions? Analysis, comment?
Just some comments.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Helsnerman from the great area of Folleville.
When I first became Commissioner, some of you may know the name Fred Dillingham. He was Commissioner, County Commissioner here, State Representative, State Senator. From the great village of Folleville. We graduated together, were in the same class. And that was one of the things that he said to me. You know, three or four years ago. It was something that he was trying to get done many, many years ago. And so this is a dream of many people in Folleville, and we appreciate. On behalf of Folleville, this purchase for the station there for the EMS. We appreciate him. Thank you.
Any further question, comment, analysis? For the resolution to purchase two hundred North Grand, Folleville, Michigan. Close the discussion, move into roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Votes nine to zero unanimous. Moving on to item eleven. L. It's number two oh two three dash oh three oh four six. It's a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office and the County of Livingston. To apply for the State of Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning Traffic Enforcement Grant. For fiscal year twenty twenty four. May I have a motion?
Motion Smith. Support Sample.
Moved by Smith, support by Sample. This was talked about at fam. Is there any further questions, analysis, comment that any commissioner would like to proceed with? Hearing none, I'll close the discussion, go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it says nine to zero unanimous, unanimous passage. We're to item eleven M, two oh two three dash oh three dash oh four seven. It's entitled a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Trimble X seven three D scanner. From Star Trek and distribution of an American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Funding. It's brought to us by the Sheriff's Office. May I have a motion to discuss?
Supported without the Star Trek.
It's been moved and supported. We're into comment, question, analysis. Any commissioner wish to speak?
I just would like to clarify that this is, that was a motion to adopt, correct?
Motion to adopt. Seeing no hands, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Nine to zero unanimous. We're at eleven N. It's number two oh two three. Dash oh three dash zero four eight. It's a resolution approving the purchase of a mobile fingerprint readers and distribution of American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA Funding brought to us by the Livingston County Sheriff's Office. May I have a motion?
So move Sample. Support Helsnerman.
Moved by Sample, support by Helsnerman. We'll move into discussion, questions or answers? Seeing none, close discussion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Nine to zero unanimous. We're on page four of the agenda. We're at item number twelve. It's entitled Accounts Payable Reports, A, Claims Dated March twenty seven, twenty twenty three. And B, Payables Dated March four through March seventeen, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion?
So move gross.
Support Nakagiri.
Moved by Gross, support by Commissioner Nakagiri. Any comment, question, or answer? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Just a comment. I wanted to thank Fiscal Services, Cindy Arbenus and. Our Munis Administrator Christine Wood for adding a, an Excel spreadsheet to the email. That you received with the whole listing of all the expenditures. It, I believe will be useful for commissioners if you wanna. What I plan on doing is just developing one long spreadsheet so I can look back over time and, and see how our, our spending has trended. Which was difficult to do with a PDF file, but the, the Excel spreadsheet will. Make it possible to do that, and I appreciate the support to make those changes. So, thank you.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
I would like to echo that. I spent a happy afternoon playing with it, so. I like it. So, the, the Excel format, you can see a lot more.
We move into voice vote for both twelve A and twelve B. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nine to zero, the chair recognizes unanimous passage. Item number thirteen on the agenda is called a public number two. This difference differs a little bit than the first one. This is a two minute time limit. Is there anybody in the room that would like to call and talk? To the commissioners on any topic?
I have no cards.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Commissioner, I have Lori Cohen.
Cohen, you have the floor. You have two minutes.
Yes, this is Lori Cowan from Unadilla Township, and I just wanted to address Drake's comments earlier. About the digital thing with Biden, and there was no executive order this March. I just wanted to get the facts straight. There was one in twenty twenty two, and it just addressed the risks and possible benefits of digital money. And never in there anywhere does it say about getting rid of paper money. So I just wanted to give the facts that I have, because I think that he had misinterpreted or heard some wrong information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person on Zoom that would like to participate in call to the public?
I have Colleen and Tim Quinn.
Colleen and Tim, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Thank you. I just, I was happy to hear what Commissioner Drake said, and I have heard stuff about this. So I'm just hoping we keep a really close eye on this and we not let this happen. This is against everything our country stands for. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's all.
Thank you. And. Further Zoom. I believe I'm seeing Danielle.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Ma'am, you have the floor for the next two minutes.
I, I actually just wanted to chime in on what you had said too, and yes, Drake is, Mr. Drake is correct. It's called Agenda twenty thirty. You might wanna look into that because it's coming and it will be cashless. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're still in call to the public?
I do not see any more hands, Commissioner.
Thank you. The. Official call to the public is now closed. The chair would like Amy to come forward. That's you. Ladies and gentlemen. This is a certificate of recognition created by the Board of Commissioners proudly presented to Amy. The Livingston County Board of Commissioners acknowledges our sincere, I added that, appreciation. To Amy for her ten years of service devoted to the County Clerk's Office throughout her career. Amy has provided exceptional services to the public and her county coworkers. Her ability to authentically connect with people is what sets Amy apart. Whether she was assisting a resident, applying for a vital record, or collaborating with county departments. She made time to create a personal connection. Overseeing the day-to-day operations of the Vital Records Division of the Clerk's Office. Allowed Amy to play a role in preserving the county's historical vital records. Each day, she was connected with the public so she could better address their needs and preserve their legacy. In addition to her devotion to county residents, she's been part of many internal committees and projects. Where she's advocated for the county's growth and success. Therefore, let it be known that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes. And expresses their utmost appreciation to Amy for her dedication to Livingston County's residents and records. Thank you for your many years of devotion to our community. You will be greatly missed, and we wish you nothing but success. In all your future plans.
Yeah, okay, that's. We're both the same size.
I'm pretty short. I didn't have heels on.
Thank you.
All right, let's start here. One, two, three, do one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you.
Leave the kegger is Friday at four thirty.
And now without any objection, this meeting is adjourned. I move, please adjourn. I can't do that without you guys? I did it one time. Did it one time.
I think, I actually was, Commissioner Nakagiri, isn't there something if you conclude the agenda and there's no objection, the chair can.
Yeah, you could say without objection, you know, but I think it's better to have a motion.
Makes it cleaner.
All right, though, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, go home.